Call meeting in order. I'd like to thank y'all for coming out. If you would stand for our indication of the place, please.
Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the many blessings. Please, Lord, forgive us of our many sins. Thank you for allowing us to gather here freely. Help us, Lord, to make the best decisions in the interest of the entire county. Be with us throughout the rest of this evening and throughout the rest of this week. In all these many favors and things we ask in our son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is rating and approval of last month's minutes, meeting minutes.
I'm motion to be approved.
Have a motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion is approved. Item three is old business, and I believe that that has been withdrawn. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Note for the record that the applicant has withdrawn the case. We have received written confirmation.
All right. Item four is new business. We have one new item, or three items of the new business. One is RZ-18, or eight-18-1247. About to announce when I have to open up a public hearing for this rezon request. Richard, do you have the county recommendations for this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So, we've got three new business public hearings, and all three cases have been advertised properly. And we are videotaping this meeting, which can be included in the case file. And everything in the case files for each of these cases will be included for the record. The first application is by Jerry Edwards, who has submitted application to rezone five individual but contiguous properties that he owns on Ollie Long Road off Cape Trail. Properties are all zoned Highway Business, HB. Mr. Edwards, like to rezone these properties to RR, Rural Residential. Intent is to sell the four vacant lots for single-family residential development. The westernmost lot has an existing occupied manufactured home on it and reviewing the criteria to consider for rezoning. Compatibility with adjacent uses in districts. Proposal to rezone for RR may be suitable in light of existing residential uses nearby. Property value. The subject properties may have a reasonable economic use under the current district of HB Highway Business. However, Ollie Long is a very small local road. And so, in terms of variety of factors, that it may be appropriate to consider rezoning to residential. Vacancy and marketing information was not readily available to staff. Evidence of need. This proposed rezoning may promote public health, safety, morality, and/or general welfare. Public facilities rezoning to single-family residential may not result in a use causing excessive or burdensome use of existing street or utilities. Consistency with the conference of plan. This area of West Pickens is identified for rural development. That includes single-family residential. This application is consistent. Staff recommends that this rezoning application from HB to RR for the four contiguous properties be approved.
Is there any questions for Richard?
Something you said four, it looks as if there's five.
There's a total of five, that's correct. There's four vacant lots, and then the one that has the existing occupied manufactured home. Right, total of five.
Jerry, is there, Mr. Edwards, is there anything you'd like to add or mention?
Well, we're gonna put four houses on these, one at a time. And they'll be, you know, full stick-built houses, full basement. And local builder, Ronnie Harrington, a big builder on these. So, we're just gonna, we think the highest and best use for that property is to do it in rural residential rather than highway business. Because my business is in front of that property. And for me to grade that off eventually or whatever, doing anything with it, it wouldn't be contiguous.
Any questions for Mr. Edwards?
What size houses you gonna build there?
The first one's gonna be about 1250 square feet. And then the next one is planned on being 1500. So, that'll be in the, you know, 14, 1250 to 1500.
My only concern was the private road that's gravel. And unless you plan on keeping it up, good luck, oh.
Okay. The way we've got this, and it's in the deed work that it's really done. When I bought this property, this apartment, little farm, on the deed work it says anybody ingress or redress is their property. Through that has to maintain that property and equal share. So, the other people back behind, back there, that are relatives of Miss Ollie Long. That was her farm that was originally broken up. That had a guy's name, Ollie Long Road. So, that's been covered about every couple of years. Myself and a couple more go through the neighborhood there on the street. And everybody pitches in a few hundred bucks. And we keep the road gravelled in its mode. It's 40-foot wide easement road. At the time the road was originally established, was that was the county requirement, or maximum requirement for county road. So, we piped it and did it. At that time, that's going back about 15 years, 16 years. That met county specs as far as width and conditions. So, anybody that buys one of these lots, it will be in the deed work. But they will be sharing equally in that, because I don't want to hear no complaints.
So, today, they're actually, all the people are actually cooperating together.
Unless they want me to dig up the road. So, I don't have a problem.
Well, obviously, they're not family then.
No, they're not.
That's the other problem? Any other questions for Mr. Edwards? I hear, I make a motion to recommend approval. Here, a second. I hear a motion is second to recommend with approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That closes that hearing. Going to open up a hearing for RZ-8-18-1249. That's Richard Walton, county recommendations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Virginia Jones submitted application to rezone 7.27 acres, located on Highway 136 West. And this is almost at the Gilmore County line. Current district is HB Highway Business. Proposal is to rezone to RR, Rural Residential. Intent is to enable a family member to put a single-family residence on the property, either manufactured home or a new stick-built house. And in terms of criteria to consider. Compatibility with adjacent uses. Proposal to rezone to Rural Residential may be suitable in light of existing residential uses. Property value being right on Highway 136. As currently zoned, commercial may have a reasonable economic use. Suitability. Proposed rezoning to RR may be suitable. Vacancy and marketing information's not readily available. Evidence of need. Proposed application may promote public health, safety, morality, and/or general welfare. Public facilities impacts. Rezoning to single-family residential, RR District, may not result in a use causing an excess or burdensome use of existing streets or utilities. The application is consistent with the conference of plan. This area is identified for rural development, which includes single-family residential. Staff recommends that this application to rezone from HB to RR be approved.
Any questions for Richard? Is Mr., anybody here represent Mr. and Mrs. Jones? I assume that needs to be tabled if no one's here to represent them.
The applicant does not have to be present. That's not a state or local requirement.
Okay, well, though, in the past, we have tabled issues if the applicant wasn't here.
I thought it was, but we may have changed it.
In the Code of Ordinances, there's not a requirement. I mean, we always give the applicant, of course, always give the applicant the information and ask that they be here, recommend that they be here. But as far as I know, it's not a legal requirement or something in the county Code of Ordinances requiring presence at the meeting.
I know it was at one time, because Ken Rice had to just happen to be in the audience and stepped in for somebody on a rezoning of the neighborhood. But when we revamped and did an outline of the hearing, a more specific outline of the hearing process, I think we may have removed that. I'm just not sure. I don't have it for me right now. I'm not sure.
I remember just what, a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half ago, the, all the future of the turning company, they were not here to table it. So, they would have somebody here the next meeting. I mean, it's whatever council recommends.
I'll just have to look that again.
So, if we don't table it, does it just die? Or do they have to come in and reapply again and pay all the fees again?
No, if y'all tabled it, it would just go to the next.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Then they would have to reapply and pay all the fees again?
Well, it would be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to what action you were taking if you were denying it or granting it or denying it because they were not here to present their case.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's rare, but I've been in, you know, I guess in 20 years of zoning cases, I've been in all kinds. I have been in controversial cases where motions have been made to approve, motions, I mean, to recommend approval, motions have been made to recommend denial, and neither one of them has passed. They haven't been able to get the majority. And I've been in where, you know, it didn't get tabled either. It just, there was no recommendation, and it just got passed on to the elected officials. That's, also, that's not recommended. That's not really good policy, but, you know, I mean.
Do we have anything on the agenda for next month?
We don't. We, at the end of the meeting, I was gonna say, we don't have any, you know, a meeting for October. I don't know of a specific reason to table it other than, I mean, y'all want the applicant to be here.
Is there, were they told to be here?
No, we never say, you know, it's required, we're gonna put you in jail or anything. But no, they were asked to be here. We always, yeah.
Well, I think the important thing is to get it right. So, I agree. And historically, you're correct. And we have always, ever since I've been on the commission, you've always required the applicant to be here to represent themselves. Because let's say there was opposition, they wouldn't be here to defend themselves. So, and my inclination is to table until we can do it. I can't see where time is of the essence on this application to do anything tonight.
Got a motion to table? We have a motion to table?
Yes.
A second.
Motion and second to table, any discussion? All those in favor of tableing this item to next month? Will you raise your hand? Motion carries unanimously.
So, now, I appreciate your time. What we're trying to do is be clear in terms of the dates. And because of state requirements for advertising, things like that, public hearing, notification, things like that. So, we need to be very specific about this. You know, I'll be glad to do it. I just need to know, you know, exactly when to be able to make this time window. It's gotta be 15 to 45 days in advance of the public hearing, which is only at the planning commission. And, you know, we need to specify a date if we're ever gonna table anything.
I think if they table it, it's automatic. It's tabled to the next call meeting, to the next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, all right. So, I'll redo the public hearing notice and get the dates changed.
Although that's next month or November, so.
Well.
It would just be the next regular meeting unless y'all decide to call it meeting for that purpose beforehand.
Okay, so, it's till October.
If you table it, it goes onto your next agenda unless y'all specify otherwise.
Okay, all right, very good. Right, no, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that hearing is closed. The next hearing is adoption of county ordinances, TA-8-18-14. I'll ask Richard Walton, county recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Based on the need for language, in the Pickens County Code of Ordinances to be consistent with current state minimum standard codes, may be appropriate to readopt Chapter 16. As y'all know, we've got various chapters that were adopted at various times. Chapter 67, zoning and land use, is one of our newer ones from 2005. The ones that come before that relate to things like alcohol, business licenses, buildings, land development. A lot of them were put in place in the 90s, including this one, Chapter 16, the Buildings and Building Regulation section. And so, what's being proposed is to readopt, readopt the chapter based on the state minimum standard codes. And that's as adopted and amended by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. So, as a local government, whether it's a city or county in Georgia, local governments are responsible for following. Each year, the State Department of Community Affairs lets us know as city and county governments which version of codes to use for permitting inspections. But it's the same codes. International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Fire Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, National Electric Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Swimming Pool, and SPA Code. So, this has been in effect essentially kind of an unfunded state mandate for at least 10 years. We've been following it. We've been permitting and inspecting because this is a state requirement. This is just a language change in Chapter 16 of the county Code of Ordinances since some of the language dates back to the 90s and, you know, needs to be taken out.
When we say a language change?
Well, so, in the 90s, for example, instead of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, there were things like CABO. Safe, you know, unsafe structural code. I can't even, I mean, you know, if somebody jogged my memory, I could remember. But, I mean, they haven't been used for inspections in, let's call it, 15 years, so.
Is the word international new to this?
New to what?
The term international.
No, the state of Georgia, in the early 2000s, I'll give you back up a little bit. In the early 2000s, as y'all know, some of Georgia was going through the Wild West in terms of development. And so, after seeing, you know, the period of, let's call it, late 90s and early 2000s, the state of Georgia essentially stepped in with a state mandate around the time that the recession hit, around '07, '08, and said, cities and counties in Georgia, you know, y'all really need to permit and inspect using standards. You know, it can't be you go to so-and-so county and you can get away with whatever you want to. You go to so-and-so city or county and you have, you know, maybe such burdensome regulations that it is incredibly difficult to get anything done. So, some of it, you know, resulted in less regulation for some places. But the majority of places, it leveled the playing field so that as of, say, July 1st, 2008, if Joe Smith walks in the door of the city of blank or county of blank, if they want to do a commercial project, they have to show that they're a state-licensed commercial contractor. That's part of it. Part of it also was saying, the state of Georgia as of, you know, sometime in the mid-2000s said, every city and county in Georgia, you've got to follow the, these, you know, that you've got in front of you in terms of inspections. Yes, sir?
It's the term international that puzzles me. I mean, who determines the international code? If you've got the whole world, which is international, who is the body? Is it the United Nations that's deciding what the code is? I mean.
No, the state of Georgia Department of Community Affairs has made this a state mandate as of, I mean, it was a big deal back around '07, '08. Contractors went crazy. I mean, they're used to it now. The inspectors are used to it now. It's not anything new.
I'm drilling down on that word international. That is troublesome to me as to who is making these decisions. This implies something outside of the bounds of Pickens County, the state of Georgia. I mean, is it the United Nations that's deciding these things? I mean, who's the?
It may be the other distinctions within the code for various countries. And maybe Land Development could look into that and let y'all know on that.
I mean, it just seems, it just jumps out at me.
Right, so, for example, each year, the state of Georgia Department of Community Affairs sends down a list to cities and counties in Georgia and says, okay, you know, as of January 1st, 2018, cities and counties in Georgia, you're to follow the 2012 addition of the International Building Code with Georgia provisions, you know, dated so-and-so. I mean, they get, they're very specific. So, it's definitely not something that's the United Nations or something. It's something where, now, I don't know which set of recommending body or reviewing body at the Capitol or at the State Department of Community Affairs. I haven't met a staff member who does that level of review. But every year, we get a different list, yeah. I mean, I'm not a certified building official, but, you know, I'm sure our building officials, you know, either one, our commercial or residential, we have certified building officials. It works both ways. It's incumbent on the public government to have certified building officials to conduct inspections. And it's incumbent on contractors to be state-licensed contractors.
I'm hung up on one word, international. And who determined what the international code is? And if the language in the state of Georgia says international code with Georgia provisions or whatever, whatever the appropriate language would be, I'm comfortable with that. But it just grabs me that, the way this is presented.
There may be a state-by-state pride in there because different states.
Are you aware, has the word international been used before? I don't remember seeing it before.
Before what date, in what context?
Since the last time this was done.
Since the last time this, I was surprised. This actually came up as part of just a normal review of the county Code of Ordinances because, I mean, like I said, you know, I've been in public governments the last 20 years. But even before the mandate in 2007, 2008, many local governments had already changed over from, for example, CABO. I mean, I just, I did not, I was not familiar with CABO and some of the other stuff that, I mean, just were circa, you know, 80s and 90s. But the bottom line is, yes, sir, I understand your concerns. Again, you're correct that every year, it's the Georgia revised version. So, it's not Uruguay's version of, you know, code standards. I mean, you know, I don't know what Uruguay might use, but, right.
I'm just thinking about Mr. Edwards here. He's getting ready to start building some houses, and he's gonna be subjected to.
Nothing new, correct. Nothing new as of, you know.
I get my Uruguay stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was about to roast the house. The housing, right. Roast, but no problem.
Oh, sure.
But basically, these are the code revisions recommended by DCA or adopted by local jurisdictions.
I mean, they're not, right, again, they're not recommended. I mean, this is a state mandate as of 2008. Whether we change our language in the county code or not, we have to follow them for inspections. But if we don't change our county Code of Ordinances, because luckily, Mr. Landem is a great, you know, good attorney. But there could be disreputable attorneys who could look in our county Code of Ordinance right now and say, what is CABO? And do y'all use CABO? And if somebody asked me that directly, I would say, no, we don't use CABO.
So, is Mr. Landem a great attorney or?
Basically, these are recommendations that DCA is asking local jurisdictions to adopt. Is that a correct statement?
Any other questions, comments?
My motion for the ordinance to be revised is recommended by staff.
Your motion, or your second? Your motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm still troubled.
Hope you Americans want to come over and start installing houses.
It's all in your, I have.
Just yours, how?
I'm busy in the grass roots. Bamboozled over.
Did I get a good time?
Yeah.
All right, that takes us out of that hearing, closes that hearing. Item five is board comments. Any comments from the board?
I'm looking at Dale Marshall.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, she is healing up. She'll still be late September at the earliest before she gets back. So, we miss her greatly. Boiling down from a daily staff of three to two, and her being the 20-year-plus veteran office manager. We miss her daily.
She counts as more than one, doesn't she, really?
For sure.
The next item is public comments. Any comments from the public?
Mr. Sherman, I've got one, if you don't mind. With the withdrawal of the application earlier this evening, as we, certainly Ms. Holmes has brought up in prior hearings, our lane use grid has some inadequacies in it. It has not been updated for several years. We talked about it a little bit at the work session, and we will talk about it again next week at the Board of Commissioners meeting. But I'd like to, I'd like to ask y'all this question so I can relate related to them which answers, as far as your appetite for asking the DCA or somebody to come in and help us update our lane use classification. I don't know if we need new classifications or just to update the table of uses or further define the table of uses. But have, it's been a while since we've looked at it, and I think that some of that's coming to light now. And we, just to kind of get ahead of that curve, maybe bring them, I wanted to ask y'all what you thought about bringing them in to do that revision.
I think it's needed, especially in the venue area. Also agriculture. I don't see our agricultural land just suddenly have all kind of businesses on it.
In that, that's where it may be, it may be in addition to the table of uses. It may be, it may be.
I looked through the tables this week because I thought that was still gonna be on there. And there was nowhere that any of that would fit into it, you know. And it's really.
And that's when, again, just making and having that discussion with the applicant, I think she agrees with.
They do need to be updated. Again, some different types of things now that we need to, you know. I'm just like, what's the difference in a trucking company where somebody has five or six trucks parked somewhere every night, and people come in and go out in the morning? And a trucking terminal, the only thing there was a truck with a terminal. So, I think some of the language does need to be updated. We've got one in my neighborhood that is, you know, a trucking company. There's been any of this.
We've evolved since the adoption, the county has evolved since the adoption. And I think we just might be, an idea to get with the experts and get with the consultants like we did originally.
And then the last three years, a dozen maybe, ten, twelve.
I think conditional may be overused, where we really should, you know, if it needs to be conditional, maybe you need to get it changed to what it would fit into again, but that is one of my concerns, and we're overdoing the conditional of some of these, because you don't know how long the conditions last, then, that's another issue.
Any other problem with conditionals is the analogy that the land development officer is required to make if that, if that land use is not adequately described in the table. And I think that everybody thought the land development office is what the applicants as well, y'all would like clarification. I mean, let's, let's clarify as best as we can, so that there's no break, you know, no discrepancy, you know what you got at that point. I'll, I'll address that with Richard next week, and then I'll follow up, let you know. That's all, thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, the last item is adjournment?
True adjournment.
Your second.
Second.
We've been seconding discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The meeting is adjourned, thank y'all for coming out.